Okay, we're going to go ahead and start our Mililani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board thirty-five monthly meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Susan, can you give me a time? Seven o'clock P M. The meeting is called to order. We'll go ahead and proceed with the presentation of our colors and our pledge allegiance by Scouts B S A six six four.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Troop attention, color guard attention, color guard four march. Mark time, march. Right wheel, march. Ready, halt. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard four, march. Mark time, march. Ready, halt. Color guard dismissed, you may now be seated.
Okay, go ahead and please be seated. Special thanks to B S A Scout six six four. That was absolutely fantastic. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. I'm just gonna go ahead and cover a meeting decorum. Uh, first of all, as you can tell, Chair Hazama is on a well-deserved vacation. So you have the second string today, me. Okay, I'll try to live up to that high standard. Okay, in terms of meeting decorum, uh, just seriously, anybody that's, uh, wishing to speak, we just ask if you could please raise your hand, be recognized by myself, and then I'll motion for you to come up to the microphone. For those that are joining us virtually, uh, again, if you could mic, uh, mute your microphone and same thing, if you want to, uh, present or say something, just raise your hand. I'll be sure to recognize you. And, uh, we wanna also hear from everyone, um, because all your comments, your concerns, your feedback, your ideas and, and, uh, recommendations are, again, important and valued. And so we ask that, uh, you keep all your comments to about three minutes if possible. Okay, with that in mind, uh, that concludes, uh, meeting decorum. Moving on, uh, along our agenda item to our Honolulu Fire Department firefighter three, Brandon Woods.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon, firefighter at the Mililani Malka Fire Station right here. Our incident stats for March two thousand twenty-five, we had one activated fire alarm, we had forty-two medicals, we had three motor vehicle collisions, and one mountain rescue. Uh, the fire safety tip for the month of April is evacuation planning. Ensure you have an emergency preparedness plan in place for situations like environmental emergencies, fires, or natural disasters. Familiarize yourself with at least two escape routes from your home and plan an evacuation path if you must leave your neighborhood due to an emergency. For more information, visit fire dot Honolulu dot gov. Leave early to avoid getting trapped by fire, smoke, or traffic delays. Set up a predetermined meeting spot like a trusted neighbor or relatives' home, a low-risk area, a shelter, or evacuation center. And bring your emergency supply kit with essential items for your family and pets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. Excellent, excellent job. And when you do something great, you get tasked over and over. So we'll see you back next month. Just kidding. Okay, uh, turning to, uh, board members first. Oh, hold on, Brandon, real quick, uh, turning to board members. Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, looking, uh, virtually, any questions? Okay, turning to our audience, any questions for our Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, the report was so great, no questions. Okay, thank you, Brandon, appreciate it. Okay, next, our Honolulu, uh, fired, uh, Police Department Lieutenant Scott Viera. Scott?
Alright, good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Scott Viera from the Wahihua Police Station and the Night Watch Commander. I'll go ahead and read the stats for, uh, this month, which covers March fourteenth to April fourteenth of this year. Uh, there was one assault case, there were no robberies, there were zero burglaries, and there were three U E M Vs or unlawful entry into motor vehicles, basically when they break into your car. Um, there were four hundred and thirty total calls for service during that time. And I'll go ahead and just, uh, give the safety tip for the month. It has to do with vehicle safety, specifically things that we can do to make our vehicles, uh, safer. Um, you know, I'm, I'm guilty of this as well, so that's why I wanted to bring it up. But, you know, first of all, just do an inspection of your vehicle. If you're traveling, say, highway speeds twenty-five, thirty, or, you know, even on the freeway, if you have the unfortunate, um, you know, if, if unfortunately you get into a collision, things that are in your car become projectiles, and it's gonna, could hurt you or your passengers, especially if you have children. So things like hydro flask, kids' sports, sometimes the bat, baseballs in there, just take it out or put it in the trunk if it doesn't have to be in the front. Um, another thing is just vision obstructions. You know, a lot of times people put things on their dashboards, and if you're driving and it's in the way, it could, um, you know, add or cause, uh, and, uh, collision. Also, things that are hanging from your rearview mirrors, I always, um, see it all the time. But if you look, even though it's small, but when it's that close to your face, it kind of blocks a good portion of your vision. So things don't have to be there, uh, get rid of it. And then finally, um, on that note of, um, things in your vehicle, you know, go through your glove box, and a lot of times people have things in there that really shouldn't be in there. In the unfortunate event that your car gets broken into, a lot of people carry the title to the car. It does not need to be in there. Registration, insurance, and your safety, um, inspection, that's it. Don't leave your, um, title to your car. It's gonna be a nightmare if that thing gets taken. A lot of people sometimes overnight have their wallets in their center councils. Make sure that doesn't stay in there overnight. It's tax season right now. A lot of times we're dropping off, picking up our taxes. Don't leave important documents in your car. So just kind of give a, look around in your vehicle, things that don't need to be in there, just, just get it out of there. That's all I have.
Okay, Lieutenant Vera, excellent, excellent tips, uh, based on, again, your experience and definitely common sense things to just be aware of. Uh, turning to board members, any questions? Alice?
Um, regarding the, uh, Mililani Kapapa Gulcha accident, uh, was the little girl that unfortunately died, was she a Mililani resident or?
So, you know, she's a juvenile, I, I believe she was actually from the Wahihua area, and that's a thing that's still under, under investigation. So I actually responded to the scene, but yeah, fifteen years old, very unfortunate. Um, I believe she was from the Wahihua area, but it's under investigation. Our traffic, uh, incident, uh, our traffic division came out to investigate, so it's investigate that and it's still under investigation. So, very unfortunate.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Okay, uh, anybody virtually online, any questions for our Honolulu Police Department? Okay, turning to our audience, any questions? Okay, Lieutenant Vera, thank you very much for your report and thank you for all that you and the Honolulu Police Department do for safety and for taking care of their residents here. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Good evening.
Got it. Okay, thanks, Scott. Okay, the Board of Water Supply, Kathleen, uh, emailed ahead of time, said that she couldn't attend today. Uh, she did leave a report, uh, that'll be included as part of the minutes, but it had something to do with detect a weak leak and the city launches, uh, new emergency notifications, but that'll be in the report. Uh, moving ahead to our military, uh, representative, Lieutenant Colonel Jared Milander, Deputy Commander, One Thirtieth Brigade Engineer.
Hi, good evening, board, uh, residents. Uh, as far as training goes for the rest of the month, um, Army in Hawaii will continue training in East Range, area with Ranger and Jungle Tactics, Small Arms Blank Fire, the twenty-sixth, oh, sorry, the twenty-first through the twenty-sixth, and the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. So all the loud booms that have been happening recently, uh, are totally mortar-lit fire training culminated this past weekend, so it should be a little quieter, uh, going forward for the rest of the month. Um, this week, the Army will, will begin conducting, if they not, haven't already, a prescribed burn on Schofield Barracks Training Area Complex. Uh, they received approval from the State, Hawaii State Department of Health, Clean Air Branch, and coordinated with the U S Fish and Wildlife Service to ensure all state, federal, and Army requirements are met. Operations will only take place during daylight hours, and, uh, Army Wild, Wildland Firefighters will remain on-site each night to monitor the areas. So there's a, a larger effort, uh, team effort going on there. I, I just kind of glossed over all the participants. Um, and the next, uh, job fair, uh, is gonna be on the twenty-second, uh, so next week, uh, at, uh, Olliamaniu Military Reservation Gym from eight-thirty, uh, A M to two o'clock P M. Um, there's still, are doing the job fairs, there's still hiring going on, it's just at a slower rate. So, um, well, based off the current administration's, uh, guidelines. Subject to any questions, that, that's what I have this month.
Okay, Colonel, thank you very much for your informative report. Turning to board members present, uh, any questions for our military rep? Okay, Teresa?
So the, uh, prescribed burn, I noticed it happened twice, it looked like, this past week. Um, it says it's during the day, but yesterday's burn looked extremely wide, and it was going into the evening time. Um, and I, I bring that up because my children notice it. Um, they grew up along Mauna Kea, and that is something that we care for, uh, figuratively and literally. We've gone up there to tend to the native, um, wildlife up there. Um, is there somewhere that the public can see exactly what areas are a part of the prescribed burn? Cause it looks like sometimes it's farther to the right of the mountain base, and then sometimes it looks like it's right in the mid, like right behind, right? And we look at Mauna Kea as a fig, a side figure of a female, a, a pae, a pregnant female. So we always mark whether it's by her head, by her breasts, by her stomach, or by her feet. So it looks like it's all different spots. So my daughter had asked yesterday when she saw it was so late, she said, can we find out where and why they do it in so many different places? And, and legitimate question. And so I'm wondering, is there somewhere that the public can go to to see where these, these, I guess, cause you have to get permits, like where it's allowed, or, or why it's such a long expanse of the mountain base?
Okay, yeah, I, I can, uh, uh, ask for the, the burn, the boundaries, uh, and, and get that over to you.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Any other questions from board members present? Any online? And turning to our community, any questions for our military representative? Okay, Colonel, thank you very much. Okay, moving along to board business. Uh, I was informed, uh, that, uh, we were supposed to have a D O E rep in, uh, City and County Parks and Recreation, uh, to get an update on the M O U, uh, on the new Mililani Middle School parking lot. But I was informed by the chair that, uh, there is no rep. I just wanted to check online to confirm. Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and table that for the, uh, next meeting. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna go into resident or community concerns and just open it up here. Any resident or community, uh, concerns? Okay, going once, twice. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to our elected officials, uh, Officer, uh, Office of the Governor. Do we have a rep, uh, to give an update?
Hi, aloha, this is Melanie. Can you hear me?
Hi, Melanie.
Hi. So, for the governor's office, according to the governor's newsletter, we are pleased to report that the Department of Hawaiian Homelands recently awarded seven and, seven hundred and ninety leases to Native Hawaiian families for two projects in West Oahu. And this is historic because this is the first in nearly two decades. So that's monumental for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Other, other news to report is that the Department of Human Resources Development is, well, has launched Operation Hire Hawaii. And what the initiative is for is to capture the interests of federal employees that either are being laid off or recently were laid off. And what, what this project or this program is all about is an expedited, expedited recruitment process so that we in the state can hire employees much quicker than the traditional recruitment that we have for the state civil service system. So we are very excited about that program. And the Department of Human Resources Development, along with several other state agencies like the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, they're gonna be at a career expo on April thirtieth. So whoever is interested, if you know friends or family members who are interested in working for the state, please send them over to the Neil Blaisdell, where we'll have that career expo. I believe it starts at like ten till two. And other news, selfishly, I'd like to report that the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, Halava Correctional Facility, had their first Kids' Day last week, Saturday for Easter, and it was the first contact visit that the facility had for forefathers that completed parenting class, so they could have their kids and grandkids come to visit them. And this has been the first contact visit in like nearly a decade. So very proud of that moment. So that's all I have to report. Um, I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Melanie, a lot of, uh, firsts. Uh, going to board members first, any questions? Okay, anybody virtually? Hey, how about, uh, our audience here? Any, uh, questions for the, uh, governor's rep? Okay, Melanie, thank you very much for your report. Uh, moving along, uh, do we have a representative from Office of Congressman Ed Case's office?
Hi, everyone, can you hear me? Uh, my name is Alan Quan from Congressman Case's office.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm actually a member of his D C staff, so you got me instead of Nester tonight. So I'm trying to drop a couple links in the chat tonight. I have the congressman's, uh, the first quarter neighborhood board report. I believe there should be an updated one coming out soon. That'll be going to the, to the chair, and I, I think I'll be able to disperse that for you folks.
I'm sorry, Alan, sorry to interrupt you. We don't have a picture, uh, for you.
Okay.
Turn on your camera.
Yeah, is that working?
Ah, perfect. Okay.
Yeah, great. Yeah, so I'll be dropping that in the chat. I think there should be an update going out to the neighborhood board members soon. And then I'm also gonna drop the link for our casework, I know, kind of with the current times that we have, where anybody who needs assistance with federal, uh, benefits. So for like, uh, if you're doing tax season, if you need I R S assistance or anything with social security, feel free to contact our office if you're having any difficulties, and we're happy to help you folks out. So I'll drop those in the chat now. I'm happy to take any questions or concerns.
Okay, Alan, thank you. Turning to board members, any questions? Okay, online, virtually, any questions? And then to our audience, any questions? Okay, Alan, thank you very much for your report. Uh, Office of the, of the Mayor, uh, Rick Blangiardi, uh, Carrie, are you on? I see you, Carrie. Oh, Carrie, can you hear us? Okay, oh, Carrie, uh, you're on. I can come back to you. Must be taking a break. Okay, I'll get back to you, Carrie. Okay, um, Office of Councilmember District Eight, Val Okimoto, uh, Jamie, you're on.
Jamie Chadel from the Office of Councilmember Val Okimoto. Good evening, Chair Kamashiro and members of the board. Just a quick recap, uh, last full council meeting was held on March nineteenth. They'll roll into the next council meeting tomorrow, starts at ten A M. It'll be live on Honolulu on Channel fifty-four. One of the, uh, bills that they're gonna be considering that was, uh, brought for, uh, for with some concerns was Bill sixty introduced last year that proposes to raise the sewer fees. The council is, uh, looking at amending, they have amended it, out of the budget committee, to start the increase beginning in July, but spread it out a little, um, along the next couple of years and, uh, use some savings in the city budget to help offset the, the steep increase that the Department of Enterprise Services proposed. Um, but then there's a couple of other tax exemption proposals that were, uh, introduced by one of Councilman Okimoto's colleagues to, uh, increase the home exemption for, uh, real property tax, people that own homes, and then also for the, uh, home exemption. So there's still a lot of, uh, deliberations that need to take place, uh, additional amendments for the, uh, operating and capital improvement projects are due on April twenty-eighth. So if board has any priorities that they'd like to see our office push through, please reach out, and we'll try and get those amendments in by, uh, April twenty-eighth. But for those on, uh, T V land, if you have any questions, our phone number is seven six eight five zero zero eight, or you can visit us at HonoluluCityCouncil dot org. If you need any questions, I'll send them right there.
Okay, Jamie, uh, great job. You always provide good updates. Okay, tough, turning to board members for questions for Jamie of, for the, uh, Councilmember Val Okimoto's office. Okay, anybody online? No, in, in our audience? Okay?
Oh, wait, then, Po, turn your camera.
Oh, did I miss somebody? Uh, do we have a question?
So there's, uh, Po Smith Call Hunter, she's, uh, one of our, uh, new hire for, from our, from our office. Say hi, Po.
Aloha, everyone. Um, I put actually some important, um, uh, websites and links in the chat if anybody's interested, um, and there, and if you need any, including the, um, the April newsletter for Val Okimoto, if anybody needs it online. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Good tag team there. Okay, hey, any questions? Okay, okay, moving along. I'm gonna go back, uh, to the Office of Mayor Rick Blangiardi. Uh, Carrie, are you on now? Okay, okay, that's okay. We'll come back to you. Okay, um, going on to Office of Councilmember for District Two, Matt Wire, our representative.
Aloha, everybody. My name is Chelsea. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Chelsea can hear you loud and clear.
All righty, thank you so much. I'll proceed with my report. Um, aloha, I am not the typical staff representative for this neighborhood board. You're stuck with me just for this time. It's usually Kelly, and she's, um, she's awesome. She's just on vacation right now. But just wanted to highlight a couple of things from our newsletter. Um, I understand, uh, Mayor's Town Hall is gonna be coming up, um, on the twenty-fourth at seven P M at Mililani High School. Uh, I know Councilmember Wire, Wire will be planning to, uh, attend, um, for a period of time. A couple of bills to highlight as well is Bill sixty-one, which is the wheelies bill, which is actually no longer a bill. It's been signed into law. This prohibits wheelies being performed on, um, public roadways. And it's really just a tool to help H P D, um, allowing them to cite individuals who are performing wheelies. I'm sure you, you folks have seen it in the news, all the tragedies, um, in our streets. So, um, glad that we can just add this into our toolbox. Um, moving on, um, Bill eighteen, which is the, uh, plastic bill, um, this prohibits plastic single-use bottles, um, from being sold in specifically city vending machines. Um, it is on the council agenda for tomorrow, and it's really just a way for us to have the opportunity to lead by example in, um, rethinking the way that we want to move forward with sustainability and resiliency in our communities. Um, so that's just my report, and I'm happy to bring back questions to the team.
Okay, thank you, Chelsea. You're awesome also. Okay, turning to board members. Okay, any questions? Okay, anybody virtually? Okay, and in our audience. Okay, Chelsea, thank you very much for your report. Okay, uh, moving along, Office of Senator, uh, Donovan Dela Cruz from District Seventeen, do we have a representative?
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, we got you, Charles.
Hi, my name's Charles Miller, and I'm a legislative aide in Senator's office. Um, so first, I want to start off by just giving you guys a quick update of where we are in the twenty-twenty-five session. Uh, conference, uh, committee that started this week, this is when the House and the Senate passed different versions of the same bill. So the House and the Senate will be meeting to compare their variations of the bill to work out the differences to make one final bill. And if Senate bills are agreed by the House or vice versa, I may go straight to the governor, uh, the governor's office. Um, Senator Delacruz is the WAM chair with the means. So they, last week, they did the H B three hundred S D one Senate draft, uh, related to the state budget. Um, so just a quick highlight of that, uh, ten point five million dollars was allocated to a new covered playground at Mililani, uh, High School. Um, thirteen point three million dollars, uh, both fiscal years of twenty-six and twenty-seven to enhance biosecurity efforts. And five million in, uh, fiscal year twenty-six and two point three million fiscal year twenty-seven for the Explosive Enforcement Section to help stop the importation of legal fireworks. Um, other notable things, last month Senator, uh, attended the Play Court blessing at Mililani Malka Elementary School. And last month during Education Week at the Capitol, Senator Delacruz recognized Principal Lynn Ajifu from Mililani E K Elementary School as the twenty-twenty-four National Blue Ribbon School. Um, this award is the recognition base of a school's overall academic performance or progress in closing the achievement gaps amongst student groups on assessments. And that's all I have. Uh, and thank you. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, Charles, good job. Turning to board members, any questions for Senator Delacruz's office? Okay, anybody online? And in our audience? Okay, thank you very much, Charles. So moving along, Office of Representative Lauren Matsumoto, uh, or Representative from District Thirty-eight? Okay, any representative, Lauren, or anybody from District Thirty-eight? Okay, seeing none. Uh, I'm gonna go back. Carrie, are you on now, uh, from the Office of Mayor Blangiardi's office? Okay, Carrie? Okay, well, I'm just gonna go ahead. Well, we'll get back to you. Okay, Office of Representative Amy Peruso, Representative Peruso, I see you online. You're on.
Aloha, good evening. Um, thank you for, um, uh, hosting tonight, for chairing this meeting tonight. You're doing a great job, very expeditious. Um, so quick update on what's happening in the House. As was mentioned, we're moving into conference committee hearings, and, um, on the House side, our majority policy cap, package, um, is really focused on, uh, a few key items. Uh, the first is modernizing the Department of Ag so that we, um, are really paying close attention to biosecurity. So we're putting additional funds into biosecurity. We're establishing, it looks like, hopefully, um, uh, Hawaii Farm to Families Program. So same kind of concept as farm to state or farm to school, but it will be working with the food banks. Um, we're also investing more money in preschool funding, hopefully, as thing, if things go as planned and our majority policy package is adopted. And then also workforce readiness, um, because we're, uh, creating more on-the-job training partnerships. Um, around housing, we're also putting more money into investing more in the Kahole Initiative and the Ohana Zones Pilot Program. And, uh, you know, your neighborhood board knows a great deal about the, both of those. Um, so continue to invest in those areas. And then, um, also creating a, a mixed income sub-account for, um, affordable housing so that we can have workforce, uh, housing availability for a wider range of folks. Um, and then, you know, to address re-entry challenges for our incarcerated or formerly incarcerated community members, um, we're expanding services, um, for those folks to transit, transition back into the community. Um, just wanted to note, a couple nights ago, I was on PBS Insights, and we had a pretty robust conversation about a couple of bills that are still moving around the proposed landfill siting. And, um, that, those are S B four thirty-eight and House Bill nine sixty-nine. And I feel fairly confident that one of those And I feel fairly confident that one of those will be signed into law by the governor. So we are working hard, though, to go beyond just protecting our aquifer and our precious agricultural land and working with other communities to find us a place that does not continue to perpetuate the environmental racism that we've seen on the West Side. So we're looking for an additional site, and I am really hoping that the governor's office and our federal delegation can help us negotiate with the military to use military lands that are available and have already been identified as feasible. So those are the some of the things that we've been working on, and I'm happy to take questions because there's just so much else that's going on that, you know, I I just kind of touched it. Oh, and then I also want to say that Annie Kuehu, who was my intern for this past session, successfully completed and did a great project presentation for the Kiki Caucus internship. And we were really fortunate to have her working with our office. That's all I have. I'm open to questions.
Okay, thank you, Amy, for your update and your kind words. If you could tell Chair Hosama that he can only go on vacation the first, second, and fourth week of the month, not the third week.
I will do that.
Okay, turning to board members. Now, Steve, I see you have a question.
Yes, I do. Amy, Stephen Melendez here. What is the schedule? Thank you for your report. What is the schedule for HB nine six nine?
So it's going into conference committee. I'm on the conference committee, so I'll be able to provide updates to the community in my e-newsletter. So folks who are interested in tracking that bill and SB four thirty eight, I would recommend that you subscribe because on that issue, I'm going to be sending out updates whenever we get updates. So I don't know that that's going to be one of the first issues decided. We have a couple weeks of conference committee hearings, and that might be one of the issues that is more most difficult to come to consensus on. I, you know, it will, I I'm pretty sure we'll only pass one of the bills. I'm not sure which one it will be.
Thank you. Okay, Teresa.
Hello, okay, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I truly appreciate Annie being able to do her internship at the Capitol and her being able to come and be very welcomed at the different board meetings, the neighborhood board meetings, whether it was here, Wahawa, or even out in Waialua, everyone was very open and to having her there. She would have been here tonight, but it is fourth quarter. She has lots of homework and she's so thankful she doesn't have to come here and squeeze homework in at nine o'clock. So we did give her, I gave her a reprieve. She's at home doing homework. Again, thank you to Representative Peruso's office. It was it was challenging for her, but she she got a lot out of it, and I can appreciate again all the neighborhood boards welcoming her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. And Steve, any other questions from board members? Okay, anybody out there virtually, questions for Representative Peruso and in our audience? Okay, Amy, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, Office of Representative Trish Lachika, do we have the representative or a rep? And Carrie didn't forget about you. Okay, no representative from District Thirty Seven at this time, okay? Carrie, are you on at this time, or do you need a little bit more time? Okay, got it. Okay, I was just informed, Carrie, that you're, I guess you don't have communications and just check the chat. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving ahead, State Department of Transportation. And you're on?
Let's let me share my screen here. You can see my screen. Okay, good evening, Vice Chair Tomashiro and members of Milalani Malka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board. I'm Casey Albert from the State DOT Highways Division. At the February's meeting, I mentioned that trees along the H two freeway need to be trimmed. I'm happy to report that our landscaping crew were able to cut back the overgrowth. Also, at the February's meeting, I mentioned the graffiti artist's latest artwork. I'm happy to report our maintenance crew managed to paint over or remove the graffiti. During my field inspection yesterday, I noticed some sign needs to be replaced, graffiti painted over, and overgrowth needs to be cut back. I will work with our maintenance crew to adjust these concerns. During my field inspection yesterday, our maintenance contractor managed to partially cut back the overgrowth along the H two freeway toward Milalani Malka. After informing them during a previous field inspection, I will follow up with our district office to see when their contractor will complete the cutting back of the overgrowth. Also, during my field inspection yesterday, our maintenance crew managed to remove the damaged portion of the hand railing along the Milalani Malka offer, which was eyesore during a previous field inspection. And finally, I want to thank Representative Matsumoto, although she's not here tonight, for all her hard work with following up with my administration on the construction of the emergency exit route through the Milalani Malka Park. Representative Matsumoto mentioned at the February's meeting, construction would start in March, and construction did start on Tuesday, March eighteen, and was substantially completed within nine working days on Friday, March twenty eighth. In the proposed design, there is a two feet wide by six inch high speed hub at the fifteen foot wide entrance. Pictures in this slide was taken last week, Tuesday, April eighth. The project will be one hundred complete this Thursday, April seventeen, after the new gate and the chain for the bollards are installed tomorrow and some sawed on Thursday. Keys to opening the new gate and the and the chain will be given to the police department, fire department, and the city. While the memorandum of agreement between the city DTS and State DOT and who will be responsible for maintaining the emergency exit route is still being worked on. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Casey. Always love seeing pictures. Okay, going to board members, Teresa.
Aloha, I have two questions. When I'll start with with the emergency access area, I noticed that it's filled with a lot of rock. Is that one, I'm assuming that's going to be the final, it's not going to be paved over or what have you. I'm a little concerned with regards to drainage, if there was any changes to the soil in the area. If there should be, for some reason, a flooding issue, all that rock goes out into the freeway, possibly. Is that going to be the final plan, that it stays rocky?
No, from our understanding, this is a temporary emergency, emergency project. The city is looking into a long-term project where they would pave the emergency route. So buses can be used. So right now, this is just a temporary fix, just in case something happens, but the city and county needs to budget for a future project to to improve the emergency route.
There's not been a confirmed estimated date of completion then for that portion?
Not at this time. I can go and research it with the city and county.
Okay, and then from the last meeting in February, you reported about, you know, getting those trees cut back, and I do appreciate that. I did notice last week, and it caught me off guard, and I don't know that this is a part of the same project, but along H two headed towards YPO, headed towards Ka'uka on that right-hand side, there are many, many albizia trees that look like are being girdled. And DLNR already has very specific rules based on big island projects that girdling hazardous trees, which albizia are in that, in 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 the hazardous tree list, and it being so close to the freeway. Is that a part of the project that girdling of albizia trees? Is that a DOT project?
That is within the DOT, and that that area there, they cut back the overgrowth only because it was blocking the exit sign towards YPO. And I saw that too, and I'm surprised they cut it back that much, but they are trying to make sure that these trees are trimmed properly, so it would not cause a hazard in case there's a storm or high winds.
Well, is there an arborist? Why I say this is because DLNR has very specific rules when it comes to albizias and how they are removed. Girdling is basically never used when it's next to the freeway because the height of the tree, you need to have at least one and a half times that height is the distance from a roadway. That's technically the legal term, is you need to have that much space back from a roadway or any or housing or any other structure in order to start girdling. And they're girdling, and it's right there. I mean, it's right along the roadside, and it's probably a dozen plus. So I would just encourage DOT to look into that actual project to make sure what they're doing is within DLNR and DOT's allowances.
Okay, I will research it with our
Thank you.
maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Good observation, great question. Steve?
Mr. Robby, Stephen Melendez here. Thank you for your report and thank you for your expeditious work on the emergency access road. I appreciate that. Next month, could you be so kind to give us the schedule for paving for that area?
Yes, okay, I will have to work with our counterpart at the city because this is a city project, so I'll have to work with them. Get back to you.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, turning again to board members, any questions? Okay, virtually, those joining us virtually, any questions? And from our community in the audience, any questions? Okay, Casey, thank you very much for your report. Before I move on to approval of board minutes, I I just want to ask, did I miss anybody? Any representative out there or any of our elected officials?
Me, hi, Vice Chair Tomashiro. This is Carrie Casso. Can you hear me?
Okay, I can hear you, Carrie. Okay, take all the time you need, but can you leave it to thirty seconds or less? Just kidding.
I am so sorry. Really apologize for my technical difficulties. But I would like to report on, make a couple of announcements and then follow up with the issues that were brought up in the last meeting in February. So, yeah, someone reported that next Thursday, we we will be having the mayor's town hall at Milalani High School at seven P M. You know, I will have to say that last year, the mayor did thirteen town halls along the island, and this year, just because of scheduling, it was determined that we would do seven. So the fact that Milalani was selected as one of the seven areas, I would really hope and encourage the community to come out and voice your concerns. Every cabinet member is present. And if you recall from two years ago, when the mayor first started his town halls, I believe Milalani, they were very fortunate. They asked for a skating park. And I believe earlier or late last year, that request came to fruition. And I believe now that park is available with the help of one of the community members who donated the electrical. That is now, you know, that is something that actually started from a request at the town hall. So again, I really want to encourage the community to come out and share your concerns. The second announcement is that on April first, the city launched a alert system for natural disasters and emergency situations called H and L Alert. And I dropped the link to the mayor's newsletter in the chat, and it has a section specifically on H and L Alert. It's very easy to sign up. You will go to hnlalert.gov, or you can text H and L alert to eight 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 seven seven seven. So again, you know, we're really encouraging the public to sign up. It's that easy because this will be a way for you to get alerts about emergencies and any other important community information. Okay, and so moving on to the issues from last, from the February meeting. The first item, I understand Mr. Avi spoke about the emergency access road. I am curious, so Mr. Avi, who at the Department of Transportation you might be working with?
Yes, I'm for the emergency exit. I was working with our deputy director for highways, Robin Shishido.
Oh, do you know who at the city at Department of Transportation Services you might have been connecting with?
I don't know. I would have to ask our deputy director because he's the one reaching out to the city. So I get to work with him.
Okay, no problem. Okay, moving on to private company signs. So Board Member Kuehu raised the issue that there was a private property management by the name of Hawaiian Management that signs that were hung alongside Weka'o Street by the Launani Valley Community Association. So our Department of Transportation Services sent out a field investigation team, and they checked it on February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, and there were no banners that were along Weka'o Street. They turned it over to DPP, Department of Planning and Permitting, who also conducted a field investigation on February twenty sixth and same finding, there were no banners along Weka'o Street. Perhaps just the fact that our board member raised the issue, perhaps they took it down, I'm not sure. But that is what our investigators found. There were no banners. And on the last issue, the question of park lights. So Chair Hosama asked, what was, what is DPR's policy on closing times for parks without light? Our Department of Parks and Recreation noted that there currently is no policy regarding closing times for parks without lighting. We have hundreds of parks throughout Oahu, and so they don't have a set time in which, you know, the parks are closed, but generally park hours, whether with or without lighting, are closed between ten P M. and five A M. If the Milalani Malka community is interested in providing gathering feedback and providing recommendations, you're you're welcome to do that in terms of park closure hours. That's all I have. I'm here for questions.
Okay, Carrie, can you start from the beginning and repeat everything that you said again? I'm just kidding. Thank you, Carrie, for, again, your detail and definitely your follow-up to questions from board members. So this time, turning to our board, Teresa.
Thanks so much for getting on that thing down at Weka'o. Yes, unfortunately, because it was a week after, it was already taken down because it was only up for that week, that purpose. I'm wondering if there's a way to have an educational letter or or flyer sent to the association. I did provide photos of the actual signages along the area, so we do know that it did belong to the association. I spoke with the managing agent as well to confirm it was ours because they're very adamant that they can put whatever they want in those spaces because it's it belongs to our association, which we all know it does not. So maybe just a real quick letter or something official to remind them of what they own and what they don't own. The other concern, and it looks like maybe OTS had come down, so the bus stops, some of them have city-installed trash cans. It looked like the one that was towards the end of Weka'o that our association might have chained a household large trash can. a household large trash can. And its cover, and it looks like someone removed the trash can, but the cover was still hanging onto the light pole. So I don't know if that's something, that's something that DTS or DP, somebody can come and remove the, I can look and I could have swore it was still there yesterday, but it's a big, heavy chain. But again, if the association installed that, they should also be made aware that they can't do those kinds of things on city property. Especially attaching it with a very large chain. So I will probably follow up with an email to you folks and you can direct me who to go to because I did speak with DPP as well. So let's just help educate our association. That'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Any other questions from fellow board members? Okay, anybody online? And our community, yes, we have a question. Please come up to the microphone and if you please state your name and then your question.
Good evening. My name is Marty Odegaard. I'm a resident here in Mililani. My question is, how are you getting the word out about the town hall meeting in Mililani? For Mililani and Mililani Malco, Wahe'ua and Waipahu, how are you getting the word out to the residents about this meeting?
Well, we've been doing press releases. And like, well, that's the primary way that we've been communicating through the press release. We released it to all the different media and they in turn will announce it to the public.
Are you going to send a letter out to the community?
Oh, no.
Residents?
Which not quite.
You know, there's some critical issues, right, like the landfill?
Pardon me?
I said, there's a lot of critical issues, especially like the landfill.
Yes, but we would not be sending out notices to all the residents asking them to attend. We do it through our communications team and send out public communication through a press release. So whether it's by oftentimes, we share it with TV, radio, public communications entities. At any rate, I hope you share it with your neighbors. And hope to see you there.
Okay, is it going to be in the cafeteria? At the high school? Or is it going to be in a larger room? Like the gymnasium?
It's at the high school. My recollection, the last time it was there, it was at the it was at the cafeteria. Or I take that back. It was at the gym.
Okay, and the second question is, I think it's in your office. Do you know the status of the Mililani fire investigation? Is it done? Is it posted?
That's a good question. We follow up with our fire department. And it is not done, so therefore it has not yet been posted. I know it's been a while. But apparently, unfortunately, we still don't, we still do not have a report.
You have an estimate when it'll be done? Will the mayor address it at the meeting?
It's not the mayor. It's actually, I believe it's the federal agency that we're waiting to hear from.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara, for your question. Okay, any other questions for Mayor's Wrap?
Chair.
Yes. Well, I'm sorry, Teresa.
I think that Matsumoto might know who DTS, the DTS, so Carrie can know who to contact with DTS.
Robbie. Okay, since, I mean, we can, Lauren, we can go right to you since our favorite District Thirty Eight representative is here, okay? Representative Lauren Matsumoto. Lauren? Thank you for rushing over here. Hope you didn't break any speed laws.
I didn't. I just missed the second half of my brother's birthday, but that's okay. I got, I still got cake and ice cream. So you have a pretty big update because we combined last month with this month. The only change is on the front. The town hall meeting just happened this week. Thank you to everybody who came out. It was a very rainy day, but we still had a wonderful turnout. But the big thing on the first page is for our mid-session survey, and we send this out every single year with some of the controversial bills that are moving through the legislature. We want to hear how you stand on that issue. And so we do have our mid-session survey. If you go to repmatsumoto.com, you can fill it out. We have the QR code here on the front. And I have had the people ask this question because when we send it out to all the households, you only get one survey, and it is not one survey per household. It's for everybody in the household who wants to fill out the survey. So I a lot of times people thought they could only fill out one. Everybody can fill it out who would like to fill out the survey. I know we've already got an update on this, but the, on the second page, you will see the picture of the Mililani Access Road for the first phase. And so if you have any other questions about that, I apologize I missed the update, but that's amazing that that got done. So really happy about that. This picture is actually taken very recently, and I know that there's going to, there was conversations about the gravel and what's going to happen with that, but we'll keep you updated as I know DOT and DTS will as well. I still have measures moving through the legislature. So right now we are at the point where we're in conference, and so that's where the House and the Senate come together to decide which of the bills are going to move forward and which version, whether it's the House bill or the Senate version or something in between. So conference, I always attribute it something kind of like when you're in college and it's like the final, your finals weeks. That's what we're in right now. So we're in that crazy session. I have one bill still moving through. It's House Bill Two Eight Six. So this is the Individual Housing Account Program Bill. It's a program that already exists. So you can use pre-tax dollars, so it's before the taxes get taken out, to save up for a down payment. So very similar to kind of like the Island Flex Plan where you can use pre-tax dollars. This program already existed. The problem is it was only five thousand dollars per year that you could save up. And who can save up? That's going to take people twenty years to save up for a down payment. And so this bill originally was to change it to twenty thousand dollars. The Senate changed it to ten, but in conference, you can always change things back. So we'll see what happens and hopefully that passes through the legislature. We do have two resolutions that passed. One was for the Kipapa Elementary School for DTS and the Department of Education and Department of Transportation. They have that crosswalk. I know it's not in Malca, but again, that's a really critical crosswalk for a lot of the students in Kipapa, and there've been many students that have almost been hit, including, I believe, the vice principal almost got hit. And then the other resolution that passed was House Resolution One Thirty, HCR One Thirty Six, and that was from a Malca resident that asked for DOT and DTS to really do some education on pedestrians wearing reflective gear between dusk and dawn. Because there's a lot of people using the bike path, but also using the road as well as the sidewalks and afraid that they're going to hit them, especially on the main drag. And there's a whole bunch of events and activities that we have done in the past two months. The only one that I'll highlight for you right now is we had the Mililani High School floor presentation. So at the legislature, you can honor people. And so we honored all of the OIA and state champions from Mililani High School in addition to their band. Because they have won the band's version of a state championship for twelve years in a row. So wanted to make sure we honored them. Three hundred and fifty students were supposed to come, but as you all know, we have a bus shortage, so they could only pick three students from each team to come. But we did have about eighty people come to that floor presentation, so that was wonderful. And that rounds out my report, but there's a lot in here if you want to look through it and ask me any questions, but there is a lot of content. And in the back, of course, we always have the resources of things that are happening at the library and different, different things happening throughout the community. And I know this was also sent to the neighborhood board, so that's going to be accessible through PDF as well. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Representative Matsumoto. Turning to board members, any questions? Okay, Alice, I see.
Oh, she has a question for my town hall. Thank you for your comments, Alice. I will take these back. But if anybody does want the last, sorry, the last thing I'll say is if anybody does want to have the PowerPoint from our town hall, you can email our office, repmatsumoto@capital.hawaii.gov, and we will send that out as well. Because we put all of our bill updates on that PowerPoint and you can look through. Okay?
Okay, turning again to board members, any questions? Okay, Alice?
I just wanted to make a comment. The gentleman out there asked Carrie, how the Blangiardi, which I got mail, because I'm evidently on the mailing list or whatever, but Lauren Matsumoto sends out whenever she's having meetings. She says she deluges us with meeting notices. I get at least two or three. And so it seems to me that perhaps our mayor's office could do the same with the gentleman downstairs.
Okay, thank you, Alice. Okay, any other comments? Okay, going virtually, anybody from our community in the audience? Okay, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you for your.
Okay, again, before I again, I'll go to the approval of the board minutes, did I miss any of our elected officials or representatives?
Hi, yeah, I'm joining from Rep Lachica's office. But I also see Rep Russo, so she can go before me. No worries.
Okay.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, you're on, Erin. You have to turn your mic on. See your lips moving.
Yeah, sorry, just wanted to finish up my report. I failed to mention that on May twelfth, we're going to be having a central Oahu meeting at Mililani High School. And it's really part of the beginning of a listening session, following on CNA DA, the end of session, and looking at what we accomplished this legislative session, but also looking towards our special session. So we're meant to have potentially three special sessions over the interim. And we'll be hopefully dealing with some of the shortfalls and some of the implications of what's happening at the federal level. So I just wanted to note that it's going to be May twelfth, Mililani High School, six to seven thirty. So thank you so much, Erin. I appreciate you letting me jump in real fast.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Okay, back to Representative Lachica's office, right?
Yes, yes.
You're on.
Hi, I'm so sorry for joining a bit late. Aloha, members of the board. I hope you're all doing well. I'm Erin Conway and here on behalf of Representative Lachica. She shares her apologies for not being able to join in person today. I did share our newsletter with the, on the Google Drive this afternoon, so it should be there. I apologize that we don't have any more copies. But it is the same as March's newsletter. So it's a March-April newsletter, just discussing what bills we have going through the legislature and whatnot. And I'll keep it very short tonight. We do have three bills that are still moving through the legislature. HB Eight Six Two, which is our school bus bill, allowing schools to use other vehicles minus the actual school buses to allow transportation of students, as well as HB Twelve Thirty One, which is banning the facial recognition in red light cameras, but also letting red light cameras be in those twenty-five school zones as selected. This bill changed a little bit while it was moving through the legislature, but we're very happy it's still alive. And then third, we have HB Three Three Two, which it's not moving anymore, but we still plan to work on this bill during the interim period. And this is the Lithium Ion Battery Recycling Working Group Bill. This came from a constituent request in our district, so we do know that it's very important. And we still plan to continue working on this during the interim period. And then lastly, we do have HB Four Three Five, which was our e-bike bill that got folded into a second bill, which is HB Nine Five Eight, which is setting new rules for e-bikes and more comprehensive regulations, which I know is a huge issue in the Mililani community. So we're happy to share that that is still moving through the legislature. And then I have one more thing is I know on this agenda, Department of Education was supposed to present on the Mililani Middle MOU. But unfortunately, I'm not sure if you all heard, but we're saddened that Deputy Superintendent unfortunately did pass away very unexpectedly. And so the department is very, they're figuring things out during this difficult time. So if you could please just share your condolences and just your patience with them as well. They're hoping to be able to have a report at next month's neighborhood board meeting. And our office will follow up with the department for this, but we were in communication with them and they were okay with us to share that. But as of now, the MOU is still remaining under review with the DOE. And then lastly, I wanted to invite you all to a talk story that our office will be holding on May first. The topic is community safety and transportation, and it will be held at the Hawaii Okinawa Ballroom in YPO at five thirty on May first. And we hope that you all can join us if you're available. And that is the conclusion of my report, and if anything has anything for Rep Lachica, I'm happy to share it with her.
Okay, thank you, Erin, for joining us. Okay, turning to board members, Steve?
Yes, thank you. Erin, thank you for your report. Steve Milander's here. Question I have on HB Three Three Two, are you still receiving comments on that bill?
Not at this time, no. But if you're interested, our office does plan to work on this during the interim, and we'd be happy to work with you during this time.
Thank you. The last meeting we had, we just, I shared about the dangers on lithium ion batteries. And there was a factory actually in the mainland, it was south of San Francisco, where a lithium ion battery factory ignited. It had thermal runaway, and there was nothing there to put it out. They actually cleared the area and then it burned down quite a bit, and then they were able to remediate it. There's a lot of dangers with lithium ion, and I'm involved with helping remediate that. So I can email my comments to Trish, if you'd like.
Yeah.
For that bill, or to you, whatever you feel.
That would be helpful. And sorry, I shouldn't have said we're not taking comment. It won't be on the public record, so on the Capitol website. But we're always happy to take those comments and then just see what we can do with them and move forward to introduce next year again.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, Alice?
Mr. Chair, I just have a curious question for Trish. I know she's been working on the school bus. Question. I have, have you looked into instead of the great big humongous school buses, the possibility of like a handy van, a handy van sized bus? I don't know that the big buses, I don't know where she is on that whole issue. I know she's been involved in it. I'm just curious because it seems to me that you might be able to get drivers easier for a handicapped van type, whatever you call it, than a, than a big bus. And I'm not sure that you need that big bus all the time. So
Yeah.
It's just a question.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. You are correct. So our bill HB Eight Six Two, it's exactly, it's going to be able to use motor coaches, small buses and vans. So you know, like the the transportation, like the big white vans you see, kind of the sprinter ones, it would allow all of those vehicles to transport students. So the drivers wouldn't need all of the regulations that they do for the CBL licenser to drive the big yellow school bus. And so that bill came out of an idea due to Governor's proclamation the past two years that has been in use due to just the school bus crisis and not having enough big school buses and drivers. And so that was part of his proclamation, and so that's why we created a bill out of it. So that they don't need, he doesn't need to sign a proclamation every year or whoever the next governor is. So that it would just be in a law that if there wasn't enough buses, that there could be other options to use.
Okay, thank you, Alice, and thank you, Erin, for your report. As you tell, we saved all our questions for the last speaker. Just kidding.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else that I missed? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the approval of the board minutes from our February eighteenth meeting. Any questions, additions, changes, comments? If not, thank you. Board minutes are approved. Okay, going to reports. Going to reports, uh, uh, Patsy Teamink, Central Oahu Regional Park, Susan?
No report.
Okay, turning to education, Steve?
Thank you. Um, Alice, would you like to go first? Okay, A- Alice has been so kind to, uh, Ms. Hudson is, is traveling now, our co-chair of Education Committee. So A- Alice was so kind to be volunteered to, uh, read the report first.
On me.
Thank you, Alice.
Um, this is Anna Hudson's report that she, she filled out and it's, the first one is Mililani Maoko Neba, uh, uh, the Mi- Mililani Eke Elementary School. Uh, they're evidently having a senior event on May 14th. And these are seniors who are, uh, former Eke students will be honored and invited to, to attend. Um, they will catch up with their classmates, hopefully, and former teachers and have a lot of fun. There's also Purple Up, which is the Eke School will honor and celebrate our military-connected students on Purple Up Day on April 15. Students are encouraged to wear purple symbolizing all branches of the military. Also, a world map will be displayed showing the locations of our military who serve our country. I think that would be a really nice event for people to show up to. Students will be treated to a performance from the US Army 25th Infantry Division. Anyway, and then May Day is, uh, May, May is Friday, May 16. There's a Memorial Day Lay Collection, uh, which, as you know, we may make lays for, for punch bowl. And so th- they're gonna be doing that on Friday, May 23rd. There's also a McDonald's Teacher Mc, excuse me, a McDonald's McTeacher Night. Uh, they're, uh, they're proudly part of the Te- McTeacher Nights, and that will be on April 17th. And I presume that's at the, at the, uh, thing in, uh, Maoko. Mililani Maoko Elementary School, Oo Oikee, is May 16. And its show or exhibit will be the focus. Uh, they're gonna showcase the talents of the Mililani Maoko Elementary students through performing arts. And, uh, so that would be something to attend also. Wheeler Milis, Middle School, uh, on behalf of the Hawaii Department of Education, is conducting a pre-assessment consultation to gather input on environmental issues for an upcoming draft environmental assessment related to the proposed upgrades at Wheeler Elementary and Middle Schools located within the Wheeler, Wheeler Army Air Force. That's a lot of words. Anyway, the, um, the schools are all, all military property, but the property is owned by the state and primarily serves children of military personnel. They're up, outdated and up, upsized and they need to be taken care of. A project need, uh, 2018 federal assessment found that the facilities do not meet modern educational standards. So they're gonna be constructing a new elementary and middle school buildings, uh, designed for seven to 800 students. So, uh, I expect they're gonna have some conversation about that. Leilahua High School, uh, has been a very interesting, um, thing, and I wanna do an aside on that. Students will, uh, well, they say the vision is students will lead fulfilling lives and contribute to, positively to society. They have a mission statement. They're also having a centennial gala on Saturday, April 19th, in the Leilahua Gym. This fundraiser includes a night filled with Leilahua's renowned culinary stations, casino fun, alumni, alumni bands, a school tour, a silent auction and a fellowship to celebrate the 100th anniversary. What my aside is, is we had a friends of the Mililani Library Board Meeting last night. One of our board members, John Mathias, is a Leilahua alumni. He has volunteered to clean the stadium and get it ready for this whole affair. He also has prepared a sound and picture photo, I, I don't know what you call it, uh, presentation of all the paintings and stuff that they have in Leilahua, and it's gonna be quite interesting. But that's my aside.
Alice, that was a fantastic report. Steve, to you. Okay, this is a tough act to follow.
Alice, I know. It's so good. You're so good, Alice. Um, thank you very much. I'll be sharing. I'll be sharing the chair report for Mililani Middle School. And if we can share a screen, great. And there's our administration, uh, another Thomas Scherr there, Principal Thomas Scherr. Uh, Mr. Nakasone Horseman, uh, Ms. Hobata, Mr. Han and Ms. Pang. Great staff. Okay, come on down a bit. Uh, I'm gonna focus this, uh, news, this report on summer school. Uh, registration opened at Mon- March 3rd, uh, for Midlani Middle and High School students. When you go to midlani middle dot, uh, their website, midlani middle dot K12 dot high dot U S, that's the registration information in there. Please note the summer school dates. Uh, the year courses is from June 5th to July 10th. Uh, the sem- semester one, it's 12 instructional days from June 5th to June 23rd. Semester two, June 24th to July 10th. And actually, there's no school on Camayamia Day, or July 4th. Uh, please note in the center there in the red, that due to the renovations, Midlani High School would not have PE facilities this summer. All PE courses will be held at Midlani Middle School. We thank the middle school for doing that for all the students. Item two, for all DOE public school students, summer school is, is free, tuition is free, yay. Um, uh, the students that are in private school, they can call, uh, the Midlani High School or Midlani Middle School concerning, uh, attending summer school there. Next item, registration, March 3rd, uh, starts at 9:00 AM for the current Midlani High and Middle School students. April 4th registration is open to all of the students. And I'd also advise that space may be limited, so if you're going to, uh, register for, uh, summer school, yes, I'll go to the next page. The next page also talks about the Easter, so per the bunny in the right corner there, uh, page two. Come on down. Hey, yay, there's the Easter bunny. Okay, so just hop to it. If you're going to go to, uh, um, summer school this year and go ahead and register. Uh, so to everyone, I want to say a happy Easter, happy reservation Sunday, that you have a, a safe and, uh, great time with family, fellowship and friends on Easter. And then here's the overall, uh, report. Thank you very much, the calendar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Good job, okay, for military and civil defense, no report. Turning to Parks and Recreation, Susan? Okay, for, uh, planning permitting and zoning and transportation, no report. Uh, turning to recognition and service awards, Alice? Okay, no report, okay? Uh, our next Mililani Maoko Launani Valley Neighborhood Board Meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 20th at 7:00 PM here. Um, hopefully Chair Hazama will be back. Uh, before I adjourn the meeting, uh, again, just wanna say thank you. Thank you for fellow board members that are present here today, to our elected officials, our representatives, our community members. Again, thank you for your service, uh, your service of time. Thank you for your input, your sharing of information and of course for advocating for the residents, uh, uh, in our district. Uh, with that in mind, uh, add a last thank you to Camelia here, uh, from our Neighborhood Commission Office. And then there is an announcement that she had, right? I see it here that the city and county of Honolulu are partnering against hunger and that you're collecting canned goods donations. So again, Camelia, thank you very much for your service. She had to like come an hour early to set up everything. So with that in mind, now Susan, can you give me a time so I can adjourn the meeting? 8:19, this meeting is adjourned.